I'd like to call the October 10, 2013, meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business today is council minutes for the meetings of September 9, September 12, and September 20, 2013, and the September 7, 2013, city council retreat. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the meeting minutes from the September 9, September 12, and September 20, 2013, meetings, and the September 7, 2013, council retreat.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and we have one today, an excellence in service award presented to office manager Cindy Floyd. Cindy, if you would meet me down front here, I would appreciate it. We have a proclamation with you, and then we'll track for you, and then you say something. It says, "The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Cindy Floyd for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Cindy Floyd has served the citizens of Williamsburg with diligence and effectiveness for over eight years as the office manager for the Public Works Department. She is the voice of the city for residents calling regarding a wide range of services offered by the department, including refuge collection, recycling, street and sidewalk maintenance, and wastewater, water and wastewater, to name a few. Cindy provides accurate information and dispatches public works, field crews, and contractors to respond to inquiries and needs, making sure nothing falls through the cracks. Cindy compiles accurate monthly performance data and manages time sheets accounting for a department of 45 employees. She steps up to serve on many interdepartmental teams, including the city's health and wellness committee, the employee holiday party committee, and this one's really important, the city's Christmas parade float, where she played the role of an unforgettable wrench. Cindy leads the mayor's annual blood drive with excellent results, demonstrating once again her professional competence and genuine caring nature. Cindy Floyd is hereby recognized with pleasure for her dedication to excellence and keeping with the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated October 10, 2013, and signed by me and Jack Total, the city manager."
Thank you.
Cindy Floyd.
Thank you.
You guys are my family. So, you know, you guys, I can't do this without you guys.
Every day I come to work, and I'm like, you're my family. It's been that way since day one, and I feel very comfortable here, and you guys have shown me the ropes, and thank you. Thank you.
Quite a turnout of public works people here. That's impressive, and that says a lot. Before we move on, I'd also like to mention that this is Steve Vaughn's last day covering city council, our last meeting for city council. You've done it for, what, seven and a half, almost eight years now, and we want to thank you for your diligence in covering us and your kindness at times, and your critical nature at times. You've been a very good person covering city council. We'll miss you. We'll invite you back when things get interesting, so, but thank you, Steve.
It might not be ever.
Yeah, right. Let's hope. Okay. Our next order of business are public hearings, and we have two today. The first is PCR 13-029, which is design review guideline updates, proposed ordinance 13-31. Looks like Ms. Murphy's here.
Mayor Holman and members of council, we're pleased to be standing here today to give you, I hope, our design review guidelines. This has been a long process, but I think it's been a good one, and we've come up with a good set of guidelines. What you have on the screen is our current design review guidelines map. We started this update back in March. Our architectural review board members are Bob Lane, chair, and he's here today, Kevin Cleve, vice chair, Andy Edwards, Demetrius Florakis, Joe Hersler, and David Stamen. We held our first public hearing in March with the board before we started the design review guidelines to get public comments, and based on all the public comments we've gotten, we've done, we had minor changes to chapters 1, 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 13. Chapters 4, 5, 6, 7, and 12 were major changes. The zoning map was also changed for Christmas addicts in the arts and cultural district, as requested, and the ARB, after all those reviews, we held a second public hearing in August, and planning commission held their public hearing in September. I'm going to briefly go over some of the guideline changes. The ARB map for AP 1 was not changed. That's still the historic area that you can see here in yellow. AP 2 is changed a little bit, but our current, our map here outlines the new neighborhoods. It's the areas outside of AP 1, which is the College Terrace, Burns Lane, Indian Springs, West Williamsburg, and Capitol Heights. AP 3 is where we made some changes. AP 3 in the beginning included Pine Crest, Capitol Court, and part of the West Williamsburg Heights area. What we're proposing to do, based on the age of Christmas addicts and the design of the houses there, we propose to put Christmas addicts in the area that is currently on Richmond Road, that is corridor protection district in the arts and cultural district, to make that all a part of the AP 3 district. And the main reason for doing it in the arts and cultural district was to make that whole district one unified district and not have two separate guideline requirements. And the major change for that going from CP to AP 3 would be that the board would get to review any demolitions that were in the current CP district. As I mentioned, the Pine Crest, we're looking to change that. I mentioned the demolitions, and to make the arts and cultural district one unified district. So this is our proposed new map. It's basically the same, except for the Christmas addicts and the area up here in the arts and cultural district. We did notify the owners of the properties in those two districts, all the Christmas addicts and all of those that were in the CP district that were going to AP 3 district. That's basically my presentation, other than to tell you that I'll go through a little bit more on, I'll leave the map up, a little bit more on chapter four. Chapter four, we updated the residential neighborhoods to reflect the neighborhoods in the comp plan. It was interesting to note the different types of buildings in that, if you looked at that district. Chapter five, we basically did a complete rewrite. We did that so that it would, we separated the existing buildings and the new buildings, so that you would know specifically what was allowed for each of those. We also, in chapter five, added the new Benjamin Moore colors, which you'll see in there. Chapter six was the corridor protection district. We did a rewrite of that, and the main reason we did the rewrite of that was to separate the residential and the commercial. We added the Benjamin Moore color. Chapter seven was a sign district. That's basically, we updated the colors and did some rewriting of the Avery color charts in that one. And chapter 12 was the major one, which we also went in and updated all the houses in the area, updated the names of the houses, got the dates of the houses. We reorganized that chapter to put those in the front, so those were the major changes. Planning Commission, as I mentioned, had their public hearing last month. They recommended approval on a vote to six to one to recommend the design review guidelines and the ordinance chapter. So, the ordinance is noted in your packet. Bob Lane, I mentioned, is here from the Architecture Review Board chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and Mr. Lee will.
Carolyn. Thank you very much, and Carolyn, I hope you and Toby, I hope you will convey to the ARB how much we appreciate all the effort that went into this, because it was a lot. And we had had a joint meeting with the ARB earlier to help us understand what was, the changes that were being made, and that was very helpful as well. So, I'll come back to council for any questions before I open the meeting. Thanks. Again, Carolyn, my understanding of a lot of these changes is it makes it more user-friendly in the sense of, say, in the corridor protection, separating business from residential, so that someone coming in really can focus on what they're interested in and what applies to them.
That's correct. In the corridor district before, it was just guidelines for the whole district. And one of the things that came up during ARB review was that people were sort of confused for the few residential areas that were in the corridor district as to what applied to them. So we looked at those sections and said it would be easier just to do a residential section, which is similar to the AP 3 district in the architectural preservation district, because those are important buildings and are on our main corridor, but the guidelines for those should be different than for a commercial structure. So, yes, we did split that up, and I think we've heard nothing but positive from people who have looked at it, thinking that it's a lot easier to understand and interpret now when you come in.
Great. Thanks. If there are no other questions, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Just like I echo your comments, thanking Architectural Review Board for their efforts here, and staff, in accomplishing all of this while simultaneously looking after the ongoing responsibilities of that group to review the cases that come before them. When we think about the guidelines that we have in the city, the primary purpose is to maintain the historic fabric that exists in Williamsburg, and also preserve that aesthetic character that really defines what Williamsburg is. And sometimes that focusing in on one particular house or one particular piece of property in such detail that people wonder why we go to so much effort. But the whole purpose is so that when you put them collectively together, you create a feeling of what Williamsburg was at a certain time and what it is today that makes it special. And we focus on those areas that tend to be, the sectors of the city that tend to be the most highly visible, and the ones that tend to be the most highly vulnerable. And by doing that, we bring together the best of the past and hopefully the best of the future. In order to do that, the ARB also needs to be sympathetic to the introduction of new and improved building materials, which they constantly review, so that the responsibility of a homeowner or business owner doesn't become too burdensome by having to find materials that are no longer available, or that could be substituted with an artificial material that does work just as well and looks just as good. But those materials are not that easy, those new materials are not that easy to come by. The other thing these guidelines need to do is have a degree of balance, so that we don't have the unintended consequence of providing, creating an environment that is so strict on the preservation side that it inhibits a property owner's ability to do anything with the property, because it becomes so expensive or potentially burdensome. And that's a really delicate balance, and I think it's one that the ARB has accomplished beautifully. So, I'm very happy with this effort. I'm sure, you know, a lot of people could read the guidelines and find fault with any single one, because they might not like the window, or they might not like the roof material, they might not like the idea of what they can do with a porch or something else. But the whole idea, again, is that collective feel and balancing all the different pressures in place, and I just think they've done a terrific job.
Thanks. John?
Very well said. Just like to thank ARB, Toby, and Carolyn for all your work on this. You know, my sense is, you know, what the ARB has produced and staff has produced is a thoughtful consideration based on years of experience in dealing with materials, dealing with the neighborhoods, dealing with what it is that the residents are confronted with, when challenged with what type of siding and what kind of colors. And so I think this is a nice evolution that kind of reflects where Williamsburg is in this new era. And so I think the guidelines are easy, very easy to understand, and I think they're easy to implement from a residential-commercial perspective. It's not as burdensome. We've kind of opened the door, but that's not to say that we've, you know, cast out, you know, the clear objective, which is to, you know, to preserve and make sure that we maintain that character that Vice Mayor Friling just commented on. So, I think they've done a great job, and I look forward to supporting it.
I think we all live in the AP 2 district, I'm pretty sure, and the fact that we're all sitting here praising it, and nobody's fussing probably says something right there, because it could be very burdensome, and it's not. And so, I agree, the board has done a wonderful job, along with the staff.
And I think it's also important to keep in mind, these are guidelines, and the ARB spends a lot of time and effort working with applicants, Carolyn upfront, and then the ARB, and I think the results speak for themselves. So, again, I think I'll echo everyone else's thanks to staff, particularly Carolyn, and to Toby and the ARB for all you've done. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the revised design review guidelines and proposed ordinance 13-31.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our second public hearing, PCR 13-031, zoning ordinance amendment to revise the visual obstruction regulations, proposed ordinance 13-32. Mr. Nestor.
This is just a minor housekeeping change. Our current standard in the ordinance, which we've had since 1991, allows no visual obstructions between three and eight feet above street grade in a visibility triangle that is 30 feet from where two streets intersect, 30 feet back and join the endpoints to a triangle, and that's what it is regardless of the individual situation. So the proposed standard we're looking at will create a clear sight triangle based on standards of the Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, ASHTO, which are national standards, and this will take into consideration site-specific design speed of the intersecting roadways, the grades of the roads, and the type of traffic control used at the intersection. You know, there may be none, there may be stop signs, there may be traffic light. And that's more fully detailed in the ordinance, and this, we feel, is a better way of doing the regulation than trying to have one size fits all and it really doesn't fit all. Planning Commission held a public hearing last month. One citizen spoke in favor of the change, and the commission recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to council for any questions for Mr. Nestor.
I have two, if I may. Mr. Nestor, could you just elaborate on why this standard does not apply in the B1, LB1, PDC, WM, and PUD districts?
Hey, those are districts where you can have your building right on the corner on the property line, and we've never had an issue with the exemption of those districts since we've had this in effect since 1991, so we just continued that.
So, is there any other measure employed to ensure traffic safety at those intersections, or is it generally the speed limit is so much lower, or why the distinction, assuming that the ordinance is in place for safety purposes?
Well, with the current regulations, of course, for some of the buildings downtown, let's say Massey Camera Building, that's right up against property lines on the corner. And if you drew that visibility triangle, you'd chop off a corner of that building. So that's why these, that's an example of why these, this section did not apply to those specific districts. But that's never created an issue the way it's been written now, so we just propose continuing that.
And then the follow-up to that is, are there any other particular intersections in the city where this would cause a change in what we, how we currently know them?
I haven't gone out and looked at individual intersections. It's very possible it could. It's possible that there could be some intersections where vegetation is growing up on a corner. This would also be used when we're evaluating current site plans, and with this in place, if there was a complaint about visibility at a certain intersection, this would give us some statutory provisions that we could use to evaluate that.
With the exclusion that's identified, or the exclusions that are identified here, do you foresee any problem with an intersection having a built structure infringing on this triangle?
No. I mean, we haven't had a problem in the years this has been in effect, and we've had that exemption, so I don't foresee any.
Okay. Scott?
Does this, new ordinance coming in effect, assuming council approves it today, will it have any grandfather effect if there's a tree planted that's currently obstructing, you know, the visual right of way? And now with this change, it will, or it's not real, technically in this, how do I ask this question? Is a tree or a branch protected under grandfathers because it was there yesterday? I mean, and I can think of a situation that's, just plagues me daily, where the tree's kind of growing into the, into the visual right of way, and this gives us an ability to go, make some corrective.
My initial answer is probably not, because it's not really related to a use. It's more about upkeep and maintenance, and so it would not.
Okay. That's all the question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Reed. If not, then I'll open the public hearing for any comments. Anybody wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll come back. I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of proposed ordinance 13-32.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business are reports. The first are the monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
I think I would just point out, if you look on the last page of the financial statements, we have the city's cash investment summary and also our long-term debt. And based on the discussion at the retreat and some conversations that I have had and the finance director has had with the financial advisor we've used in the past, Davenport and Company, we've given them the green light to begin working on a financing for the Striker Center. The reason to move ahead with that is because the interest rate environment is moving upward, and they've advised that now is a good time to go to market rather than two or three or months down the road. So, with that, the intention is, over the next month, they will, and they've also advised that the market right now looks like the most efficient way to borrow is the method we typically use, which is using bank-qualified borrowing from local financial institutions, which are solicited to give quotes for the financing. So, we're going to be doing that work over the next month and then come back to the council in November with some form of recommendation, depending on what we get in the marketplace.
Any questions about that? I mean, that seems a prudent way to go at this point, and if for some reason the project didn't go forward and we did the borrowing, we can always just...
Sure, then you can pay off the loan early. Of course, the loss in that is the origination cost we would have, and most of that is the cost for the FA's work and for the bond council, which certifies that it is a legitimate tax-exempt issue.
I think that's heading in the right direction in terms of how to finance whatever is done here. Financing versus using cash, as we all know, we haven't been building our cash reserves here in the last decade, so if we move forward, I think debt is probably the best way to go.
Okay, thank you. Monthly department operating reports, anything?
Nothing in particular to point out.
Any questions? If not, city manager reports. We have two. The first is legislative issues for the General Assembly, proposed resolution 13-14.
Assistant city manager Miller will give the report.
Ms. Miller, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you, for consideration today, is the city's 2014 proposed legislative agenda for the General Assembly session 2014. We talked a little bit more in depth on each of these issues at Saturday's retreat, but I just wanted to briefly remind you the topics that were included. We have seven priority areas that are included in this year's proposed agenda. First, looking at tourism promotion. The second is continuing widening of I-64 on the peninsula specifically, but also between Newport News and Williamsburg as a priority. Looking at continued funding of the passenger rail on the Virginia peninsula, and encouraging our legislative delegation to continue to look at and pursue having additional train service on the peninsula as well. Computation of tax on internet sale of hotel rooms has been an item that we've had for several of our legislative agendas, and this asked the state to take specific state legislation to address this issue. The College of William &amp; Mary has also made a request to be included on our agenda. Their request focuses on supporting a sustainable funding model for academic excellence, financial aid, also for faculty and staff compensation, as well as supporting the financing for some of the capital projects that they've been working on, which include an upgrade to their fine arts facility and renovations to some of their residence halls on campus. We've included an item, a new item this year, a little bit more specific on this item, and we've talked about this at previous work sessions with council, on the cost of water quality, specifically asking the state to shoulder more of that burden that it's going to cost for the mandates that are coming down regarding water and water quality, continuing to fund the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund at the $35 million level, and also do some enabling legislation that allows for remediation on non-urban and agricultural runoff pollution. And then the final item looks at financial impact on city government. And under this item, we've named several items that are of greatest financial importance to the city, everything from education to transportation, public safety, human services, mandated officials and such. And you've seen this item before on past legislative agendas. So our recommendation is to approve the proposed legislative agenda as proposed today. Once approved, a copy will be sent to our legislative delegation, and I will work on scheduling a meeting with that delegation, typically in the December timeframe is when we try to do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Jody, and thank you for all your good work in putting this together. Any questions at this point? If not, we have discussed this multiple times, so I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve resolution 13-14, supporting certain local and state legislative priorities.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next city manager report is the Virginia Local Disability Program opt-out.
Ms. Miller has this one.
Ms. Miller?
Maybe we should call this the assistant city manager report.
Right.
This item was included on council's agenda, determined, based on the outcome of our discussion on this issue for Saturday's retreat. Now, council remembers, as part of the new hybrid retirement plan that the IRS will implement at the beginning of 2014, it requires localities that are going to have employees that are hired either after January 1, 2014, or those who elect to go into this new retirement... hired either after January 1st, 2014, or those who elect to go into this new retirement category for VRS, to, to be eligible and required to provide disability programs, both short-term and long-term disability. And so one of the first decisions each locality in Virginia needs to make, and these are localities that are VRS clients, needs to make is determine what disability program you'd like to participate in, whether you would like to stay with the VRS program and the program that they provide, or whether or not the locality would like to opt out of the VRS program. Now, it's not an either-or. We do have to provide the disability program. It's just a matter with whether or not we stay with VRS or decide to go with a private company to provide the services. Staff has done a lot of work and research on this, and as we talked about at Saturday's retreat, our recommendation at this point, based on everything we know at the moment, is to stay with VRS for this program. City has all its retirement programs with VRS, and for us, it seems to make a whole lot of sense. And based on what we know at the moment, the rates are pretty common. There's only about a thousand-dollar difference between what we know with the VRS program, as well as what some of the, the competitive rates, in quotes, we were getting from some of the private groups, which include companies working with VML and VCA, which are two of the big, two of the big providers. We know that VRS Board is meeting on October 17th, and so at that meeting, they'll be announcing the new rates for this program, which will be effective July 1st, 2014. At that point, if we feel like the rates moving forward are, are too high for the city, we would recommend to the mayor that the council hold a special meeting between now and November 1st, which is the deadline to opt out of the program, in order to pass a resolution to opt out of the VRS program. At that point, once we opt it out, we would pursue providing the same coverage of disability insurance and services through a private vendor.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Miller. What that means is, right now, you're recommending that we stay, which means no action is required.
Exactly.
But once you find out new rates, we may come back and want to make a different decision.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes?
It's not a large window that we have, which is basically between the 17th and the 31st to make a decision. And if we decide to opt out, we have irrevocably opted out until the General Assembly takes some action that might give us the opportunity to opt back in.
That is correct.
If we stay in, we've irrevocably stayed in unless the General Assembly creates another window where we could opt out.
Yes.
What is the obligation on VRS about providing a rate that is accurate to cost or appropriate to cost, so that there's not any incentive to provide a loss leader rate to get municipalities to stay in, and then once that window is passed, you know, I'm not saying that anybody would intentionally do that. I'm just wondering, is, is there a statute or any legislative requirement that they create a rate that's accurately reflective of the cost? Or that keeps everything funded at 100% or close to it in liability?
And I would flip that around. The same question can be asked of the other providers as well, so, you know.
I'm not aware there's any legislation regarding that. I don't, Chris or Jack, I'm not aware of anything other than...
I don't know of anything either. So the answer to your question is no?
Okay. Thank you. Any other...
You had mentioned that cost difference of a thousand, as I understand, that's a thousand over three years.
Three years. The way the initial quotes came in, they were locked in for up to three years. So that's where the first three years. And that's why I made sure to say, based on what we know at the moment, that's, that's where our best is, is recommendation.
When you balance that against what the increased cost to the city and staff of maintaining an entirely separate program...
Sure. And that's where I was going to head. You know, I think our city employees are deserved of, of having some consistency and not trying to interrupt it. So at this point, I, I like the recommendation.
Okay. Anything else? Stay tuned. Thank you very much, Jody. Next is city attorney reports. Do we have any?
Nothing today.
Okay. Our next order of business is unfinished business, and this brings us to the Stryker Center project conceptual program elements. And at the last two retreats, particularly the first retreat, we spent a lot of time with this, and then had a retreat, a meeting, and several meetings on this. And I thought it would be worth going through these, not in great detail, but just to give people a sense of, and the public a sense of, of the breadth of, of issues that are covered here. Is this, now you're going to have me, you're going to try my...
You want to help out?
Yeah, we...
Cover this.
Yeah, okay. Just push that aside, okay? The button in the middle does nothing. Just, just to give you, and the public a sense of, of the breadth of, of issues we discussed, we started with the, the site program elements that, that deal with, with things such as the location of the building and, and what have you, and you can see those there. Again, I'll say that this is on the city's website, so anyone who wishes to look at this in more detail, I encourage you to go to the website, and that would be just WilliamsburgVA.gov/striker, and that will put you in, into this. So there's site program elements. There are exterior program elements about the building envelope and types of materials and what have you. Exterior design elements, and here we spent a lot of time on this, about the philosophy of, of the design and making it a focal point of the square, distinguishing it from buildings in the city's suburban periphery and from the historic area, things of that nature, also talking about materials as, as well. That follows on with clear entrance transparency, inviting, you know, those, all those types of, of elements in, in the exterior design. Then talked about the interior foyer exhibition space in, in the building, and again, you can see a number of elements there that, that talk about the way we hope this will function within the, the building and, and provide access to other spaces as well. The council chamber itself also, we talked about in great detail, and, and what we hope that will be in terms of providing both a seat for city council, but also a small auditorium for performances and lectures and what have you. So creating a multi-use space that is council chambers, but also more acoustics are an important part of that. We then talked about a work session space for city council, also making that broadcast capable in the same way that the council chambers are, and allowing that for use by ARB and, and planning commission meetings, as well as city council work sessions. We talked about other spaces in, in the building, not only including the, the large auditorium that already exists, but the, the council chamber or a small auditorium that would fit sort of in, in, in the middle here, and then provide additional meeting space for meeting rooms, a large room, the work room, medium-sized and small rooms. So we had substantial discussion about that and the way those should function, and, and the importance of providing technology in, in those spaces as well. We then talked about the library space, the space for the library staff in, in the building and, and the needs there, and again, a number of issues there, particularly ensuring that that library workspace provides a workspace station that faces into the foyer exhibition space and provides a monitoring for that. Support elements, everything from kitchen, restrooms, storage, what have you, the HVAC systems, what have you, the humidity control, all, all the things that are important, lighting, all the things that are important to making the building functional for, as a multipurpose building. And once again, this is on the website, so if, if you want to look at the details, they are there. We then talked about general interior space elements, looking for LEED certification, and other program elements, including the idea that future expansion should be organized in a way that it will function integrally with the, the building as it's built. We then spent some time looking at different images, and, and these are not saying we want it to look like this, but here are some elements of those images that helped council think about sort of the, the building. And, and you can see, I'll just flip through these, but you can see there are various types of buildings and, and, you know, spaces and transparency, clarity of entrance, those types of questions that we looked at. So again, these, these are to provide guidelines. Now, these were provided to the three teams. Jack Tuttle sent them to the teams along with a memo, asking them to respond, if they wish to respond with additional design elements by November 22nd, I believe the date is. It also suggested that both library staff and city staff will be available for consultation as needed, that we would be willing to compensate them for their work up to a particular level. I believe that's $7,500 compensation up to that level for, for the work they do. I think, is, am I leaving something out, Jack?
Those are the...
Those are the major elements of that. So those have been sent to, to the three teams. Jack, have we heard back from...
I've heard from two back, both acknowledging receipt. One said, yes, we're going to go forward. The other one said, we have some questions that they, the intention, I'm sure, is they're going to go forward, but they have serious questions they'd like answered to this point, which we'll be responding to. And the third team was the, was Gersey Tingle, who we've been talking with all along. So didn't really expect to get an email back from them. So I, I'm hopeful that all three groups will participate.
Okay. And again, I would encourage anyone who's interested in this to go to the city's website to look at these, because I think, I feel, and I hope, I believe council feels, that we've put a lot of work and thought into this, and that, that it's been a useful process in getting us to, to this point. And the ball's now in, in the three teams' courts to see what they come back with.
I have one question. Could we go back to the, the meeting space comparison or the chart that shows the different sizes? I'm a little confused, and I should have said something earlier. I know we talked about this in our meetings. One of the questions that we asked library staff was about the small conference room, and what would, what was going to be their expansion need in the future? And the response was, well, we might have to eventually move into that small room to take that over. And so our, at least my recollection of our conversation was, why don't we then put in two small rooms, so that if the library in the future is forced to take over the small room for another purpose, we still have a small room that's available for the public, and we're not in a position where we're then thinking, well, do we add another very small room onto this building? Or do we, is that just a, a space that we no longer have available? But I don't see that reflected here.
Well, we also talked about adding a divider in the other rooms to create a small room when needed. So maybe that's what the architects need to come back with, you know, either another small room or a divider in one of the...
But effectively, and if, if the library staff needs to expand and takes over that small room, that's one less meeting space that we have, and one of the primary purposes of building this building is to provide additional meeting space for the public. So I'd hate for us to give up, and again, my, this is just my recollection from staff, from library staff, was that that small room is used regularly by people who, so do we want to then compromise a larger room and its use by having to divide it up for the purpose of the smaller room? I just think if, I don't want to open up the second floor conversation again, but we're going to build it.
Yeah, your recollection is, is mine as well, and that, you know, I would ask the city manager to, to communicate that to the three teams, that the thought that, you know, if, if in fact that small conference room is going to end up being used either mostly by the library or ultimately be space for expansion if needed, then what does that mean for a small meeting space? And, and it, there may be multiple ways to do that, I don't know, but that, that's something that needs to be on their, on their plate. So, thank you, Paul. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Flip back through this, this out of here. Okay. So again, I would encourage anyone listening, anyone with an interest in this, to go to the city's website and look at, look at these. And, and again, stay tuned, because hopefully on November 22nd, we'll have some responses back from the teams, and then we'll start the process of, of looking at, at designs. Our next order of business is schedule of meetings, Jack. Anything in particular to point out?
No, just something that is not on the schedule, but is coming up. The two members of council and myself will be attending the Virginia Municipal League starting this Sunday for a couple of days. So that's going to be in Arlington this year. And also, we have extended an invitation to Virginia Municipal League to return to Williamsburg in 2017. That's their statewide conference site. So we'll be talking with their executive committee on Sunday about that as well.
Terrific.
And those two members that are going are Vice Mayor Friling and Councilmember Newtonson.
Thanks.
And I should mention that I asked a neighbor to pick up my mail while I'm gone, and he said, would we please fix Washington while we're up there?
No comment. Okay. Good luck. Okay. Okay. Any questions, Jack? That brings us to next order of new business. I think we have none, is that correct?
Well, I, I did want to mention, I see Ms. Fairbanks is here. We got a email from Ms. Fairbanks about parking on Carey Street, and I didn't know if we wanted to respond to that. I know I got, I've just got a email from the city manager about it, so I didn't know if you wanted to say something about it.
Right. Yeah. Ms. Fairbanks has been kind enough to review the changes that have been made on, in, in residential permit parking, particularly in the Carey Street neighborhood, that's her area, main area of concern, and, and suggest what's been working and what hasn't been working, and how the, the changes in policy, notably the reduction in the number of visitor hang tags, is working out. Of course, I'll, you know, I'm sure during open forum, she'll, she'll speak, speak for herself, and it might be just as well to wait and let her do that, and then, and then we could respond to that.
Okay.
Fine.
Thank you. Any, any other new business? If not, that brings us to our final item, which is open forum a time for anyone who wishes to address council on any issue. To do so, if you wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and Sabrina, welcome.
Thank you. Sabrina Fairbanks, landlord, 201 Carey Street. And I just wanted to, well, come up, since you've mentioned my email, I wanted to watch things for a good month since the new school year started, to give you an update and just let you know how well the changes are working, that your city departments have done and that you've approved. So there were a few unintended consequences with the smaller number of guest passes. There's just not a sea of cars anymore, so it's pretty obvious how many people are using the guest passes that are left, you know, to live there, and, or to use them for William &amp; Mary. But the larger number, it looks like they're using them to, I would say, break your three-person rule, but that's not clear, and, because I don't know how many people should be living, you know, in each place. It just may be that, you know, there's a problem with, for the landlord, that there are people living there that we don't know about, but that they might not be breaking the three-person rule.
Right. Well, I have to say, we really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think, you know, this is constantly an iteration towards something that works better, and, and I think the changes that were made as a result of, of your suggestions have, have made a difference. I've seen them on my street as well as, as others. So, and again, I hope you will stay, stay alert and involved, because again, I think anything we can do to make it work better for, for residents and, and, you know, renters, you know, permanent residents, whatever, is, is good. And, and I think, as you said, so far, it looks like it's, it's working much better than in the past.
And the, at the end of my, at the end of my letter, you noticed that I said the, the one thing that... the one thing that continues to be a problem are, you know, other yellow decal vehicles parking on Carey Street because it's so close to campus, and it's just so cumbersome for the police and for the finance department and for me, you know, to sit there every day and identify those vehicles, then, you know, turn them in and, so I, I still think it would just, you know, ease the resources if we just changed that street to a different color.
And, and we've certainly discussed some options there, so we'll, we'll keep that on the plate.
Okay.
Thank you, Sabrina, very much. Anybody else wish to address council? If not, I'll come back to Vice Mayor. I think we have something for closing session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning staff evaluation.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess.